Everybody, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 26, 2025, Chesapeake Beach. The first thing I'd like to do is call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please, and let's start down with Commissioner Rutke, please.
Jen Rutke, present.
Laurie Brown.
And I'm Cindy Greenold.
Mary Sue Grace Smith, apparently I am here.
Christopher Smith, I am here.
Kelly Hahn, present.
And let the record show that Rachel Larson Weaver is not present. Okay, and the next thing I'd like to do is please ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
To the flag of the United States of America, or which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to approve the, approve the agenda, actually. What I'd like to do is have somebody move to discuss and.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have approval of the second. I'd like to actually make a change, if I could, please. I'd like to amend the, the number six and number seven. So in other words, we'd start with number seven on the agenda, which is new business, critical area review update, and then we go into number six, which is old business signage. So we would just change them around in position. Do I have any issues with that? Is everybody okay with that change, Adam and? Okay, can I have a vote on this, please, to approve that change?
I make a motion that we, we approve the change in switching around those two items.
And I would be proud to second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please? Okay, next we have number four, approval of the minutes of January 22, 2025. Do we have a second?
To approve the amendments.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have a second? Do we have any concerns, issues, changes? The only thing I did notice here, and I, sorry, I noticed this late. On the first sentence of old business, page two, I think not, if you have non-complaint, not non-compliant. I think it's supposed to be non-compliant, correct? You see where it says non-complaint signs?
Yeah.
Even though I have many non-complaints or signs, we, I think, P-L-I-A-N-T. So just that one spelling thing I noticed.
Yep.
And I think that was all I noticed. So anybody else have anything else they'd like to change or? Okay, then I would like to move those minutes with the amended change with non-compliant, non-complaint to be non-compliant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we're gonna go to, we're gonna go down to the five, oh, let's see what, I'm sorry. We're gonna go down to new business, critical area, we're gonna make that our old business. So we need a staff report, please, from our planner, Ms. Franklin.
Sure, if you guys can just bear with me, my voice is going in and out, so I apologize. So I met with Critical Area Commission staff about the submission of the critical area ordinance now that has been adopted by the town council. And so there are a few things that came up because by the time we adopted the ordinance, the new law that was passed last year had taken effect. They are gonna need us to make changes to comply with that new law. They do understand that we're trying to insert like coastal resiliency and comply with the law through that. But there's just some changes we're gonna have to put in. And so they're gonna just, we're gonna send it up to the Critical Area Commission and they'll just send us back, here's what, here's the text you have to put in to comply, and then you guys can review it again. They are not huge fan of the fact that we keep, we have separate sections for violations and for the Board of Appeals and for the overlay. And I've explained our reasoning for that. But it's possible that the commission itself will ask us to repeat the information that's in our Board of Appeals and violations section in the zoning ordinance. So we should just be prepared for that request. And then there is this one little change that they wanted to make to the Board of Appeals, which is simply that we have a statement that was under procedures and they felt it was more of a standard than a procedure. So they just asked that they, we move it from procedures to standards. And so the request is to approve that change this evening. We'll submit everything and then we'll receive the comments that bring us up to compliance with the law passed next year and, and see how firmly the commission feels about that separation that we have in our ordinance.
Okay, is that, is that it for your report?
Yeah, that's the summary.
Anybody have any questions for our planner? Anybody want to know more about this before we? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
My commotion to approve the amendment to the Board of Appeals.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
To the signage. Now with signage, we only, we have about an hour and a half to go through this, maybe a little bit more than that, to go through three sections that our planner, Ms. Franklin, would like us to discuss tonight. The three sections that are brand new that she brought forward tonight are exemptions, electronic messaging center, centers, and illumination. So let's go ahead and turn to, let's see here, let me just write in the, if you get your sign ordinance update, it's gonna be, we're gonna start with exemptions, which is on page three. The other part that you see on page two, we will come back to. But right now, she wants to start correctly with number three, with, with e-exemptions, which is on page three. Okay, staff report, please.
Okay, so with regard to exemptions, and I'll work on making this larger. But at the last meeting, we discussed wanting to have a section that exempts certain signs from the ordinance so that they can just, people can take a look at this section and say, oh, this is a sign I have. I do not need to get a permit for this sign. So that is what this section does. And it deals with sort of your official traffic signs, your government signs. Small signs are mostly exempt, real estate signs. It also, I decided to move the issue with the open, the neon open signs into exempt signs so folks can have their one, one little open sign. Interior signage, just wanna make sure I get everything. Flags, I think we had discussed that at some point. And directional signage, and then the real estate signs is like sort of the biggest section of this. So I don't know, if you have, have reviewed it, have questions about it, I'm gonna make it bigger so that you guys can see it, if I can.
There, that's better, I think, right there, yeah. Okay, so if you, if you look at, I think maybe we've already looked at some of these, I don't know. Most of these are standard. If you go to other towns, we've all checked different, different towns and their exemptions, and most of these are commonly exempt signs. Everything from traffic signs obviously are exempt. Does everybody understand what a wayfaring sign is? That's a term that maybe some people don't, don't necessarily know. But directional signs, of course, government signs, real estate signs. Holiday and seasonal decorations are considered signage of sorts, you know. I guess that's another question. What if somebody puts a holiday sign and they leave it up all year?
So.
Is there, you know, in my.
Yeah, this section on, so there's nothing, no conditions on holiday and seasonal decorations. So if you would like to put a time limit, you know, say, within two months before or after a holiday or something of that, because, you know, it takes people a while with Christmas lights. You, we can certainly add that.
So it's not just lights would be, you know, some people put, you know, happy, you know, whatever, who knows? So would that be considered, like, if you were using religious terminology in a sign? I can't even think of an example. But when is it a holiday sign and when is it a religious sign? Or I guess you can put up a religious sign. It's, it's personal speech, it's free speech. So I guess that wouldn't be, I don't know if that's even in here, I didn't see anything like that, but I guess that wouldn't be excluded anyway.
Yeah, the general guidance is if you have to look at the, if you have to read the sign to know whether it's allowed, then you probably should change that just to stay out of First Amendment rights situations.
You say that again.
Would you repeat that?
If in order, so if in order for me to approve a sign that comes in, I have to read what it says, then it probably is not compliant.
Because you mean it's like a paragraph or a?
No, it's, it's, it's judging the content of the sign is the problem. Like, we're, we're not allowed to regulate sign content, basically.
Which do I admit?
So if I have to read the sign in order to decide whether I approve it or not, then I'm thinking about the content. So generally, most of the regulations should not require me to read the, the text of the sign to approve it or not approve it. So that's where the religious falls under. I did check with the lawyer about, we have offensive or obscene language somewhere in here, it's not allowed, and that can stay. But other than that, we want to not regulate the content.
I want to actually go through, I know this sounds tedious and it may take some time, but because we might have people streaming this, and it is an important issue for a lot of our businesses out there, I want to make sure that everybody understands what these exemptions would include. Let me just briefly read out the titles, and if y'all have a question, just let me know, and we're gonna ask a little bit more specifics about them. Number one, official traffic signs, I think we understand that one. Number two, government regulatory signs, including wayfaring signs. I think we understand, do we all understand what that means?
Is that like for like historic sites or anything, or travel, like, what is, I mean, wayfair? I know what a wayfair is, but I'm not sure.
It's more for like turn left here, or sometimes towns have like this.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and anything really on those sign poles on the side of the road. Whereas if you have a historic house, that's really covered in item three.
Okay. And then number three, you might have questions about any on-premises sign that is less than four square feet in area, provided that, A, the total area of all such signs does not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are attached and painted, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. Or B, the sign is not illuminated in any way. So I guess A would be the most, the one that you might have questions about. Anybody have a question about A, or do y'all understand that one? The total area of all such signs does not exceed 10% of the area of the building face. Now I guess you could say, could that possibly be a huge sign? If you have a huge building face?
Well, it can't be more than 100 square feet.
But it couldn't be more than 100 square feet, but it's 100 square feet, 10 by 10. Is that something that's pretty large? That we would wanna think about permitting or not, I'm just.
Let me, because the slideshow has those.
Pretty good size.
These guys in it.
I guess it could be one by 100, so.
It's, it's this one right here, right?
Or 2 by 50, I mean.
Am I doing my math right? I think it's this one. This in the bottom left, bottom left.
What is that, and what are the numbers down below?
It says 120 by 120.
No, 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 that's not. Would be.
10 times, yeah.
10 by 10.
Yeah, that's 10 by 10 is.
10 by 10 would be the large, the 100 square feet, right?
This is 120 inches.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's 10 feet by 10 feet.
You totally need a new prescription. But it's this. I'm sorry, it's, there you go. I guess that's a little closer, you're right.
All right, can you see my, can you see my cursor going over?
I can see it now, thank you. Well, that is a fairly large sign. What do we all think about that? Or non-exempt, I mean, for an exempt sign, excuse me, for an exempt sign. Commissioner Rutke, you seem to have a concern about this.
Well, it just seems to be a pretty large sign not to be scrutinized a little bit.
What do you think?
I'm thinking I agree.
Okay, well, we're, so we're, we're starting to thinking it should be smaller than that, or what?
I guess.
I was.
Unless the, unless it's.
I should clarify that this is like, that's the area of all the signs combined, not, like the sign itself is only gonna be four square feet. But you could fill that area with four foot square signs.
So let's read it again. The total area of all such signs does not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are attached and painted, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. Okay. Commissioner Smith, it sounds like you have an issue.
Just trying to explain, like, where it could be lots of signs on one, on one face that.
Like the octagon.
Yes, exactly.
For example.
Yep, like, for example, that could equal the 10 by 10.
Gotcha.
I think is what it is.
It can't be more than a total of 100 square feet.
The octagon has more than 100 square feet, yes.
It's, it's in the aggregate, then?
In the aggregate, yes.
Now, do you think maybe we should add that word?
Hang on a second.
It's just that, that's just my.
Confusing, actually, but even if you had that, are you still happy with it the way the intention is?
Yeah, this is really like the liquor stores in town. They have like all those little signs. And right now, I believe they are more than 10% of the area or 100 square feet, which is because we're considering the sign regulations. That's why there's not really the enforcement proceeding right now.
So do we want to change how many square feet per building face, building wall face? So in other words, if the building wall faces, you know, so many square feet, maybe we want to have just a total amount of signage on that one wall, on that one face. I know the octagon is odd because we have a lot of different faces, but that makes it a little bit challenging.
You said 10, sorry, can you say 100 foot?
Are we concerned that we want a smaller amount of aggregate, a total signage on one face? So if we have this wall, we only want so many square feet on this size wall. And it looks as though we think 100 square feet on a small wall is gonna be, I mean, you know, we're not delineating how big the size of the wall. We're not, okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, let me read this, 10%, okay. Okay, does not exceed 10% or, okay. Commissioner Brown, you, you haven't said anything about this one. What are your thoughts?
And painted. In the right spot.
Yeah.
Painted walls.
Painted signs.
Yeah, there's, in the definition, it, you're, a sign could be just your painting on the wall, not an actual separate.
Oh.
A thing that's affixed to the wall.
But if it's 100 square feet, then it's not and painted?
It is.
It just looks out of place where it is.
It could say attached or painted.
Oh, I say, okay, so you want to change the and or.
It does make more sense.
Okay, or painted. So this is not included in the total amount of signage they can have. So in other words, what if you have a sign that protrudes out from the wall as well? Would you have the little signs plus a sign that comes out?
Well, that sign would need a permit.
Oh, it would need a, that sign coming out would need a permit, right? But in assessing how much signage can be on that, you know, on, on the building total, would the sign protruding out on like lunch, some kind of a wrought iron, whatever, or whatever, would that be included? So the total signage.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
It's gonna be over what we want for that building, is what I'm saying. We're gonna be going over that.
Yeah, so it says all such signs, but we could delete such, right? And then that would mean that all signs.
There you go. Now that might would be, okay, so the total area of all signs, now we're really changing the way this looks. So we've taken out the word such. Now we're really tweaking this. The total area of all signs does not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are attached or painted, or 100 square feet, whichever is less.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do we have any painted buildings that are in town?
Is the, and maybe the antique store? I'm not sure.
I think parts of Rod and Reel are actually painted.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Parts of Rod and Reel are actually painted. So you can have, you know, parts of it painted and parts of it that are whatever.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The question I have is, it says, it's the area to which they are attached. Can you have multiple faces on, like the octagon?
This is.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, it's just all clutter to me.
And the problem is when you're, the, the reason why you have the word face is because you're thinking that you're looking at one face at, at a time. Whereas at the octagon, you're actually seeing multiple faces at one time. And so the face thing doesn't really apply to the octagon. Or maybe even to some of our other buildings that are smaller that you can kind of see both sides of at the same time. Because the implication is, is that we're trying to reduce sign clutter. We're trying, we're trying, we're trying to go down the street and not see so many different signs because this side gets so much signage, that side gets so much signage. I thought, you know, most sign ordinances, don't they say a total amount of signage per building? And no more, it doesn't apply to per face?
Yes, so, and so does this sign ordinance for permitted signs.
Permitted signs.
So this, this section was actually in, it's in the existing sign ordinance, and I moved it over here. So the other thing that we could do, instead of having this here the way it is, is just say, because these are the exempt signs, you could just limit it, provided that there are no more than two. And then bring this language back over into the permitting process.
No more than two square feet?
No, just no more than two of those four square foot sign, right? You can, you could limit maybe 10 or what, whatever number you want to make it, instead of basing it on the size of the building, because this is just where you don't need a permit, right?
Right.
So if you want to have 30 of them, maybe you need a permit. And you have to follow the regulations for the permit. Whereas if you only want two or 10, then you don't need to come get a permit.
Yes.
If I might, yes. So then, because if I understand this right, somebody could have these exempt signs plus, as you had said, bracketed signs or other signs. And I think it might be good to be reasonable, because people have to advertise their commercial establishment, but we all, you know, and then there's the, the other side where you do want to avoid clutter, but that might be clearer. Just see, it just seems to me it's clearer when you had said about limiting a number of signs.
Commissioner Smith, did you have something that you were gonna say?
Well, um, I guess when it comes to, I guess, this particular one, when it comes to like the liquor stores or anything, like, we're talking about like six to seven signs because it's up to 100 square feet. So I, I don't really know how many are actually on the octagon or any of the other liquor stores that are within our community. But, I mean, six to seven signs, I think, is pretty minimal compared to what's up there right now, so. And, and I'm basing that off of like a four by four, you know, sign, you know, that's up in the window or like, you know, whatever, so I don't, I'm not sure if, I think 100 square feet is, is, is reasonable, like, when it comes to those type of businesses, based on how many signs they currently have up there, you know, as far as taken away. That makes sense.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Hahn.
So the businesses that sell liquor and they have these signs, do they have an opportunity to choose the size of the sign? Do they have the signs made? Are they, or are they given to them by the distributor? Like, if we change these and they can't use these signs anymore, could they get another size sign to meet our requirements?
I don't know the answer to that. But I can, I can add it to the list of questions, though.
If I might, Commissioner Hahn, what I think, I, I understand what you're saying is that certain things are just part of the advertising material from the distributors, from maybe the potato chip company or whatever.
Beer company.
And then maybe this will be in, these restrictions would be in contrast to that. And could, it could damage, let's just say, what they're able, because then they might have to spend their own money to make the signs. I understand what you're saying.
Well, on the other hand, though, they could have that, but just have enough to add up to 100 square feet. So they could still have those little distributor signs, whatnot. But if you add the square footage altogether, it can't go over 100 square feet. So I, I understand that, but. So if you have a building where you're seeing two different faces and they're allowed 100 square feet per face, or let's just say you can see three sides of the building, you're seeing three, I mean, it's really almost not fair to the different establishments. Oh, my gosh, you can see two different faces from, you know, blah, blah, blah. Oh, you can see four, you know. So I mean, I, I think there should be a, an absolute total number of square feet per building, and, and there shouldn't be anything exempt. I mean, it should all be included in the total, total number. The only thing exempt should be those little tiny things that go on the windows that say seeing eye dog or whatever, you know, whatever the thing is that go on windows that are for safety, whatever. But other than, and I originally thought that's what that one was going to include, were those little tiny signs. But anything else, I think it should go into the total square footage of what we allow for that building. And if they want to spread it out over three faces, then let them spread it out. But usually signage is more, you know, impactful if you don't spread it out over too big of an area, I would think. So should we, so going back to A, should we eliminate A? And just, just, just eliminate A entirely? I mean, how do we, how should we do that?
I think you need some kind of limitation on it. Otherwise, you could put 200 feet of the, the square feet of them.
Those little tiny signs?
Yeah, I think the question for y'all is, do you want to limit it by number, right? And then you would just need a permit if you want to exceed that number. Or do you want to try to limit it by percentage and size?
Present, in three above, on any premises that has a total area of less than four square feet.
Each, yeah, each sign.
How do you get to 10% or, uh, anyway, um, I mean, four square feet?
It's a lot of little signs, right?
Right.
Yeah. And really, the signs that are on the liquor stores are mostly bigger than that, anyway.
Okay, so what would you suggest we do with A?
I think it is either okay as it is, or okay to be replaced with a number limit of signs. And I think it's you all's decision which way you want to go.
So you're saying leave it as you have it up there?
Or.
Or?
Something like, I'll, I'll type something up.
Or just say you can have no more than two, uh, uh, two signs under four square feet on each face, is what you're saying? Or put a number down?
Some number.
Whatever number you choose. There should be no more than X number of signs on each face.
I don't know why I said. Now you guys can see what I do when you're talking. Does that?
Well, would that then be put?
You can have A or B.
Oh, you would still be able to have up to 100 square feet total? So you would still be able to have up to 100 square feet?
No.
Oh, either A or B?
Yeah, you want to pick A or B. I was just typing it so you could see.
But you still want to have a maximum amount of square footage, right?
But that will be in the permitted section, not in the exemptions.
Okay, all right.
Because if you say only two signs that are four square feet, your limit is eight square feet.
Okay.
So you don't, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Which is more beneficial for the business?
I think it's, I think this is, option B is easier, right? And.
Easier, yeah.
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 I, I think it would cause less confusion and consternation. Don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the next question is, what number would that be?
Well, we would delete that. And then it would be like, yeah.
We even want two little signs that are four square feet on, I mean, do we, do we even want that?
You probably do want to do at least two, because if you think about, when you're talking about maybe a historic marker sign, maybe a QR code attached to the door, maybe no dogs allowed, those littler ones, I mean, I would say four seems reasonable, but we might want, on a, do some research and revisit if it seems like more would be needed.
Would a, would a Visa, a little Visa sticker count as one? An American Express would count as two? A QR would count as three? Right?
Or, or could we?
Yeah.
Could, but could those then perhaps be, um, kind of like, um, they don't, they, certain ones don't count towards?
Right.
Signage, because they're kind of, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
You don't think of that as a sign. I mean, it's a decal, but I mean, it's signage, but it's.
Yeah.
True.
Okay, that, that part I have to think about a little more. So I'm making a note on that.
Okay, so we're gonna put a hold on 3A slash, 3A, I guess, we're gonna put a hold on. Okay, um, well, we've gotten far on 3. I don't think this would be so hard, but it is. Okay, so then we go down to number four. One neon open sign per business is exempt, provided that A, it is not greater than four square feet, B, the elimination complies with the regulations set forth in section J. Do you want to go to section J?
So section J is new, and it's a lot, and I would like to do the.
That's the one that we still have to go over. So we may have to come back and look at that again.
Right.
Um, now going to the open sign, would that be one of the signs that would be included in the, uh, you know, the section that we were just talking about?
Not to be counted against the.
Yeah, is that one of the exempt signs and?
So would be an exempt sign. It, it's a little different than, I mean, it's the same size, but it's illuminated. So that's why it has its, partly why it has its own section. But yes, you would be able to have five, like, say, we said X is four, then you would be able to have five signs.
Okay, so that wouldn't be include, counted in the
Right.
non-illuminated group. Okay, got it. Does anybody have an issue with number four? No issues? I don't hear any, anybody. Okay, number five. Signage directly affixed to the interior or exterior face of windows other than flashing, blinking, scrolling, waving, fluttering, or floating signs, provided that A, the total area of all such signage shall not cover more than 20% of the window's total area.
So if we're counting this in 5A, would it still be counted in 3A?
So the, these are the signs that don't need a permit. So you could have one of each sign that is exempt. Right, so every exempt sign, you, you could have on your lot every single exempt sign.
So you could have the neon, uh, open sign? That would be the one. Then you could have, or others. Yeah, you could have other things, yeah. Um, so 20%, I think, is fairly common. Most, most towns use 20%. And, um, so that means any kind of window, any, it, it could be a, a little window, it could be a sliding glass door, it can be the window above a door, it could be any kind of a window. And of course, we have violations with that as well. I mean, there's already people that violate that one as well. Any questions or concerns about 5A? Concern about 5A? Okay.
Oh, so that means that you can have flashing, blinking, scrolling, waving, fluttering, or floating signs attached to the window.
It says other than. It says other, should we use something other wording, other than, other than, or is other than?
But not.
It says other than.
What?
Signage directly affi, other than flashing, so you can't have flashing, blinking, scrolling, et cetera.
We can actually say this again, but that doesn't address the, we, we repeat this, but that would only remove flashing, blinking, and scrolling.
How about provided that same is not? Instead of other than?
Or just no?
Yeah.
No flashing, blinking, scrolling, waving.
Yeah, that may be better, actually.
Simple and just say it that way.
Any possibility of confusion?
Yes, I.
That they would come back to see you to request clarification.
On your Wednesdays.
So signage.
Not a fluttering sign.
What I did here.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Okay, so you're saying?
Oh, that's much clearer.
Yeah.
Did you not want to put blinking or scrolling in?
Also, section J doesn't allow any blinking or scrolling or anything like that. So that's why I added the
Okay.
elimination complies with section J.
Okay, I think that's, um, more. Any other concerns about 5, 5A, 5B, or 5C? Okay. Let's go to six. Signs inside a building or other enclosed facility not meant to be viewed from the outside, provided A, they are located greater than three feet from any exterior window.
Why are we, why are we concerned if it's their business and it's inside and it's not visual? Why do we care?
It's because if they're closer, if they're closer than three feet, you actually are seeing it, it starts to become a window sign.
You may have it like on a wall in front of a window, let's say, in a corridor.
So most people aren't going to have this issue, but say you have all these, you, you know, you want to put a lot of signs like the liquor stores do. This could be a way, if you're allowed to just put it inside, so you have an A-frame inside that's a foot from the window and you're seeing it through the window, it's blocking the window, but it's not affixed to the window. So.
Does everybody like the way that's worded? Signs inside a building or other enclosed facility not meant to be viewed from the outside, provided. There's something not right about how that's written.
Who decides whether or not it's meant to be viewed? Because if it's not meant to be viewed, how would we be, I mean?
I agree.
How would it be?
It's oddly worded.
It could just be that we take out this and then bring this up here. Because it's not, it doesn't matter whether they're meant to be viewed or not. It matters whether they are viewed or not.
Right. And just because it's not a fix of the window, if it's right next to the window, they could be meaning for it to be, uh, observed from the outside of the window. So to skirt the rules, I could add another.
Yeah.
So, um, how do you want to?
Does that phrasing work?
So signs inside a building or other enclosed facility located greater than three feet from any exterior window. Okay, so signs are exempt if they're inside a building or other enclosed facility, provided they are located greater than three feet from any exterior. Okay, okay. Okay, I think that, that makes a lot more sense. Okay, so that's been changed. Good, good, good. Number seven, holiday and seasonal direction, uh, decorations. Did we have any issues with time limitations on that? Or what do y'all think about that? Um, every town has it diff, has it worded differently. They, some do and some don't. Commissioner Redgate, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I don't have a particular problem with it. Personally, I wouldn't want it up. But whether or not I would judge to say somebody else couldn't.
Commissioner Brown?
I love Christmas decorations. I'm always so sad when they come down. So, no, that's, that's fine, yeah, I, yeah.
What about, uh, Commissioner Smith? What do you think?
I'm with you. I love Christmas decorations, so.
The longer the better.
Sorry, yeah.
Uh, very congenial group here. Commissioner Han?
Sorry, I'm with my colleagues here.
Okay, then there's that, then, uh, no, no.
As we can't require everyone put up Christmas decorations all year long, sorry.
Hey, let's turn the page. Number eight, large flags in addition to national, state, or town flags, one large flag per lot or permitted commercial operation, provided that A, flags and flag poles shall not be located within any right-of-way, B, flags shall have a maximum height of 30 feet. We want to have a size of a flag, or, I mean, can you have it, you know, 50 by 50? I mean, what? Do we have to have, uh, delineate what size we want that flag? We've got a height. And it says large flags. Um, what if it had something about, uh, you know, something that was against a political party? I don't know, what, I don't know. I know there were some controversial flags that were being used during the, the political campaign that I know they had to deal with. What, what, what is the issue with free speech and flags? Or do we know?
I mean, flags are a little like signs, right? Is what it is. Certainly flags are waving and moving around, right? So.
They're fluttering.
They're fluttering.
Not waving?
So.
We could, they're waving, yeah.
You know, you can have some more limits on these. And, and what this is trying to do is say you can't have, you know, six different flags. But you could certainly have this just saying, large flags, national, state, you know, one national, one state, or one town flag is permitted, right? You, you could limit it like that.
Okay, so.
And dictate the kind of sign. I mean, the kind of flag.
Or limit it, it's really.
It's limiting it because really the flags aren't, the flags aren't signs unless they have words on them.
Oh, really?
So our definition of sign, you guys are gonna get a headache if I scroll to it. Try to close your eyes in for a minute.
That's true. I guess as, as far as signage is concerned, I guess you're right there. Well, wait a minute. Can you just have the Amazon logo? Can't you just have a logo and isn't that a sign?
Look at the town sign, turn around. I mean, it's got, it's, I mean, the flag, it's got.
Writing on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Right.
I mean, and then you have around Super Bowl season, some people put out flags for their teams.
Yep.
Or their political party.
So would there be a difference between a short-term use of a flag like that and then the long-term use like the flags behind me? Do we want to do it that way?
And.
How do we want to?
Commissioner, if I, yes, my, um, chair, um, I was thinking, we don't talk about the size of the flag pole. And I don't know, I mean, someone, I don't know much about this, but could not someone put a very, very, like taller than the surround, you know, than anything else we've seen? And then that also creates some other kind of distractionary issue.
Yes, because this limit is 30 feet, which is taller than.
Three feet, it's about three stories. It's about a three-story building.
It says the flag shall have a maximum height. That's the cloth.
Yes.
I'm wondering about, you have a 100-foot flag pole and then you put a flag that measures appropriately. I, I could just.
Sure, I could see somebody doing that.
But like to push, you know?
We should clarify that it's the flag pole that has.
Or, 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 no, I mean, I think I don't know if you're also regulating the size of the cloth or you want to.
I think that's the question, um, that you guys are considering is, should we, you know, find out what that standard size is and put that in here?
But I also think the pole, I don't know, I just also think we need to.
This is inside, right? And we're talking outside. So you would usually have a bigger flag outside than you would necessarily inside.
Possibly, yeah. So, um, what I do when you guys ask a question like this, see, is I just put a little note on the side there and then I'll go research, I'll probably just ask the town what size they have over here, because we don't want it to be. Right, um, we don't want it to be smaller than that. And then I'll be able to report that back to you guys.
Okay. Number eight, we will also. Okay. Then we have nine directional signs, provided they do not contain any commercial messaging and provided that A, no single directional. and provided that A, no single directional sign shall exceed four square feet. B, no directional sign shall exceed five feet in height. And C, this sign is not eliminated, illuminated, excuse me, not illuminated in any way. Yes. Please, please, yes.
So someone could have, seems to me there could be kind of like those old Burma shave signs on the roads, like Route sixty-six. Someone could have a, do we not limit the directional signs as well? Would that not?
There's not a limit on the number.
But I'm wondering.
But we could add a limit on it.
I don't know. I'm just saying it's, it came to mind. I don't know that it's desirable or not, but.
We, we do limit, in the real estate signs, we limit the number of real estate signs that can be telling you how to get to an open house. So I feel like it's. Here we go. It's three. So we could limit this to three as well.
Assistant?
Yeah.
A note, "Commercial messaging." So you can have the name of the store? Could have the, I mean, what, what is considered commercial messaging? I mean, a sign with an arrow with no, you know, pizza here or something like that's pretty useless.
I think what this is really meant to be more is like parking this way, right? Do, you know, entrance around the back, like that type of thing. Uh, but we can, this is what I'm going to put us here is, how do we define this?
Directional signs, the definition is on page eighteen. Those guys, it reads ahead, Larry.
Tell me if I'm giving anyone a headache when I do this.
Like those cross-referenced or like spelled out.
Well, you know, do you want the definitions in the front?
No, but sometimes I just think, having read so many statutes in the last thirty-something years, when you're told to refer back somewhere else or forward somewhere else.
Page eighteen.
They want us to put down the page number? Or just, or, or just a footnote.
It's like it should be here.
And just actually spell it out. That way, somebody doesn't lose their train of thought as they're doing so many things. It's there for them.
It would be handy, for sure. I've always thought that in some of these codes.
Not finding it in here.
So going, okay.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go back because I don't know why I'm not seeing it here.
I also, I mean, I think that in lots of places where we refer to other sections, I just think it makes someone's analysis cleaner, easier, so that you have to be, and throughout anything that we do, I just think it's helpful. I mean, tried to read the Clean Air Act in law school.
What, at the end, well, let's come back and talk about how we should, if we should do that, cross-reference with, with the terminology or with the definitions. Maybe we should do something like that. Would that be too complicated?
I'll help.
So, is it that kind of like providing where the definition is located? Or providing the definition at each point?
Well, I think that's what you're talking about, is where they're located, so you can cross-reference.
Well, but sometimes it's kind of like you have to, it's like you, you need like ten arms for someone and your dog to like, here, you, you keep your hand on this page and then put a sticker over here. And it's, I, the way that my brain works, I find it easier to have things when I'm reviewing it, not having to go to other places.
Right.
I mean, you could put a footnote at the top to say at the bottom, definitions on page eighteen or whatever.
Or, but then, right, but I also think it'd be, and I know it's a pain, but it might be nice to say, put the definition down there and cite it, so that someone doesn't have to flip back through lots of things.
Well, I was looking at that. So then you'll have a large sign, then you'll have directional signs.
I know.
Real estate signs.
Yep.
And just on this one page. So then half the page will be definitions.
I don't, I don't disagree. Or maybe just at the end of the section, you have those sections, those where you're told to refer. And it could just be called like reference sections, where then you could be right there. That, I think it streamlines it for the user.
I think we might want to ask Madam Clerk about how that will work in MUNICO or Civic Plus.
How it would work in what?
So, because our code is codified, like how will, the footnotes won't track in, in the system, will they?
She has a furrowed brow. I'm not sure she's.
I guess, so in, in the online, I suppose, I don't know if they can link to them or how they, how they do that, is I guess what I'm saying.
Like, like, like.
Oh, like make it blue, a different color, and then you click on it and it goes to the.
Think about this, as, as Sarah is doing things, instead of having to have ten different windows open, she's able to make a little note. Instead of you having to go to a bunch of different documents, you are able to go right there. And most people do things online.
I don't know if, if your system, like, that's why I'm looking at Madam Clerk, because I don't know if the system can handle what. It's, it's great. It's just whether your system can do it.
But the other way to do it is just say, signs that provide directions. Just make it clear. Um, and you could just make it, you know, the definition in, you know, in the code itself and make it easier to understand what, what are you really referring to here? The thing that I am questioning is the five feet in height. Do we really want to be able to allow a directional sign five feet tall?
That would be me, because I'm five feet tall.
Okay, stand up. So, so, no, stand up, really, stand up.
No, I did.
So if you are a five-foot sign and you're going down the street, basically, it's, it's pretty much at somebody's, well, my, it would be my nose or whatever. But I'm just thinking, if you had a bunch of directional signs up and down the street, is that too tall? And if you go to North Beach, their directional signs are not that high. A lot of directional signs are lower, actually, like more like four feet. So that they're not.
Intrusive?
Yeah, they're not as obvious. I mean, you want to, you want to see them, yeah, you want to be able to see them, of course. But if five-foot signage, and then how big would that sign block be? Would it be like, how big would it be? And, and is it too tall? Would it be too much to have? If everybody, in the worst-case scenario, had directional signs up and down the street, how would that look, I guess, is the question?
Yes, I think I'm thinking of these more as not on the outside of the lot, but on, once you get to the place, like how you're, you know, where the parking is, is, is really my thinking with this. Because you're not going to, it's not going to be a sign that says, "Traders, turn here." It's going to say, "Parking."
We're trying to make pictures of those signs. But usually, when you see an arrow going this way for parking, they're not, you're driving, you're back a little ways, so you can look in and you can see the arrow, but you don't need to have it five foot tall or five foot high. So I'm worried that five feet is too high for a directional sign.
You're already in the car.
Or even if you're walking, you really don't need it. So five feet seems way too high.
Tools would help. You know, if we, if.
I had some pictures. Do we have those pictures that you took last month? Do any of those have directional signs on them, I wonder?
All right, the, the non-conforming?
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, let's just take a look at the, well, let's just take a look at one of those signs, like one of those plazas and see if you had a five-foot-high sign to.
I'm just trying to see.
Lock a lot of.
It'd be pretty high. Because, Mary Sue, if you were standing up against the wall, up against that projector.
I'm sitting right.
Down there, but I'm just saying, five feet comes up pretty high. It comes up probably to where that wood panel starts. And the wall, and the white wall begins, it's probably at least, it's higher than that, actually, when I'm seeing it, thinking five. Quite high, actually. So to me, five feet is too tall, too high for a directional sign.
Yeah, I guess we think of, you know, how many, like when you're sitting, generally, if you're walking, you have time to see.
Yeah.
But if you're driving, sometimes someone's honking behind you, you know, but you have to think of, how many feet is it from the ground where you're sitting in the car? I'm sure people have researched this, to know the optimum level for safe turning and that you see it in enough advanced time so that you don't screech on your brakes. And, oh, that's all, period.
No, I'm, I'm just.
Yes, it has been heavily researched.
So what's the answer, then?
So, I can, I can get the answer for you next time, but the traffic, traffic and sign size, it's not always hanging out in my head. So, but I can definitely get you the information.
I mean, especially, it depends on how fast you're going, you know, how, it, it, there's a lot that goes into that kind of a signage, sign, I would think.
It, it also depends on like the speed of the road, which complicates it.
How fast the cars are going, exactly.
The weather.
Maybe that's, maybe what, because we're talking about exempt signs, what we really should do with this section is directional signs with, within the, the lot, like not.
Oh, I see. Well, they can't be in the right-of-way, they're not in the, it doesn't say where they can be or not be. They're not going to be in the right-of-way. They're going to be in, in, in the lot. So it's.
So, I think there's two sort of options. Do we want to try to create a height limit based on different zones? Because the different zones have different roads. So that would be the way to do it. Or do we want to just say that this is referring specifically to directional signs that are like not really meant to be viewed from the road, but meant to be viewed from?
On-site?
Yeah, once you get on-site, to know that you're going to go parking around the back. Whatever that is.
I'm trying to think, doesn't traders have a, a sign that says, "Enter"? Or it seems like it's low to the ground. I mean, it seems like most of them are low to the ground, like no more than three or four feet. But anyway, do you want to research that? And we'll get back to that one again? I mean, I'm sorry, but. Five just seems way too high to me, but I could be wrong here. Yeah. No, I mean, we, we want to make this right. We don't want to make it onerous and complicated.
The final product, because this.
No, I mean, sadly, this is going to matter to a lot of people. Okay, number ten. Real estate signs. And I think, I think this is all standard.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of complicated, but it is standard. And I did review like multiples and try to pull in together and think about how it impacts all the different areas.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One thing I don't see in the real estate section is when the open house signs have to come down. And that has been in many jurisdictions where I've sold real estate, a very big deal.
Yes.
And then the town will come along or the city will come along. They'll pull the signs, they'll put them in a dumpster, they'll, whatever. And that's clutter. And plus, it's extra advertising for the agent, because now they've got agents' names and telephone numbers. And, you know, it's not just a turn here kind of thing.
Yeah, so they, it does say that the signs may be in place during daylight hours on the day of the open house, while the real estate broker is present at the house being sold.
Should we put an "only" in there? I mean, because it sounds kind of vague when you just say.
That doesn't seem direct enough.
Put "only," maybe in place only during daylight? I mean, should we put the "only" in there?
Yeah, I, I put "only."
Let's put "only" in there. So, so then we can change it to, "One sign may be placed on each street frontage and an additional three off-premise signs may be in place only during daylight hours on the day of the open house, while the real estate broker is present at the house being sold." That's about as specific, that's on page five. That's on page five. That's about as specific as you can get, don't you think? "In the case that the real estate broker has multiple open house events within one development, they are limited to a total of four."
No, I love that.
Which is it really?
So you know what they would go for, because that's more than three.
That's right. There you go.
I meant four.
You meant four. Okay, there you go.
So if they leave signs them, yeah.
If they, they leave them, then obviously we wind up having to clean them up.
Yes, who's going to do that?
Public Works would have to clean them up. But there could be, I mean, it's, it is a code violation, right, to leave them up, so.
And do they get fined for Public Works having to go pick up those signs?
Who bears?
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember what I put in that section. I think I said something about like the cost of removal. But it would be hard to enforce the cost of removal for these type of signs. Just because the courts would probably not really be happy about having to enforce it if it went there.
Would you not do something that if someone has like, like three strikes and you're out, then you, you don't get to have signs until you pay that fine? You pay the cost of the town having to rectify.
Yeah. So that will go in, that would go in the.
Violations. We're going to talk about that.
If I might.
Are we going to be talking about violations?
Well, I, I, no, I was.
Sorry, go ahead then, yes.
Under, under real estate signs on the second sentence, there's the word "the" and there's also the word "any." You don't need both. I apologize, I didn't, I just saw that.
Oh, yes. Oh, you're on page four, I'm sorry. Okay, so ones, okay, so on A or B, C?
Just the interim.
One sign not exceeding six square feet may be placed on each street frontage of the any.
And it's, any, I think, should be stricken.
Yes.
And then I had another question. Under ten B, "Sign shall be removed within five days after the deed has been recorded." Well, the deed has not been recorded for sale. That doesn't make sense. And deeds can take a long time to come back. I think it means after the settlement, five days after the settlement?
Right, because you don't know when, it's not like there's an announcement either. So you'd have to go digging for the information to know when it was recorded.
Oh, how do we want to change that? After this sale has been.
Well, after complete.
After settlement.
Yeah.
Final settlement or.
Final settlement is how you want to say it? After final settlement?
Or the sale has been completed or.
How did you?
I can just accept this stuff, so you can see it cleaner.
Okay. So on.
Oh, okay.
B, "All signs shall be removed within five days after the settlement has been completed for sale or lease signed for the rental of the property."
Well, the sign doesn't belong there.
That's awkward.
"All signs shall be removed within five days after the settlement."
Or.
These could be two separate sentences.
And a lease would be, and you could say the execution of the lease.
Right.
Ugh, I think I just made it more complicated.
I'm not helping.
No. You're not. You're fine. Does that work?
Okay, "All signs shall be removed within five days after the settlement has been completed for sale or the execution of the lease for the rental of property."
Five days. Yeah, that doesn't, for sale, that for sale doesn't.
I think the word for sale must be. Shall be removed within five days.
Oh, you can take it. I guess you can take it out.
Yeah, you can take that, the for sale. "All sign, all signs shall be removed within five days after the settlement has been completed, or the execution of the lease."
Rental lease. You could just say the rental. Well, that's ridiculous.
So it's, or the execution of the lease for the, or the property, not, take the word "of" out.
Of the property.
Or of, or do you want "of"? Do you want to take out "the"? Lease for the property. Okay.
Should be complete, um. Has been completed.
Or how about the lease has been executed for the property?
Yeah, I think that's, or the, yeah.
Lease has been executed for the property. That sound good?
But this, I, I kind of, I don't know, for the subject property, but that's could just be the way that I.
Yeah, I mean, we could say subject property, but then we're adding another word. Adding one more word. We like fewer words, not more. Okay. Do you like this? Everybody read B again.
Do me.
That, for the property's coming out at the end there.
Do we need A? Is it five days?
Just remove that. Yes, or no?
So within five days after the settlement, and after the lease has been executed. So five days after the lease has been executed as well.
Well, it depends on if you're buying it or if you're renting it.
No, I'm saying, though, you want to have a, a.
You want a parallel sentence? You want to?
Well, you want to have it so that somebody's not going to, you know, be in the house for nine months of the lease. It's been executed, but, you know, they've been in there for nine months, and it's still up. The sign's still up. I mean, should we have a time period? Okay, the person signs the contract for the lease. The day after the sign should come down, correct?
So we're saying five days.
Yeah, but you're saying five days within either the, the settlement or the lease has been executed.
That's going to be two different pro, property.
So.
Two different.
I think this is better if I.
Sentences.
Yeah, I think I, it's better if I make it two sentences.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
And I think maybe let me bring that back next time. Okay?
Yeah. Okay, so far, we are betting the thousand or, okay. I guess we liked holiday sign. That was pretty good. Okay. Number 11. Okay, so we also have that no real estate sign should be, uh, can be illuminated, so we do want to maintain that. Number 11 and 12, we're already in there. Let's just, let's just go over that, just because it's finishing up. Any repainting or repapering of a sign which conforms to the provisions of this chapter. And number 12, signs advertising changes in the program, provided that the initial installation of the sign has been properly permitted.
What program?
If you're a theater or a church.
It should say, or, or perhaps it should say, "The program" makes it sound as if we've already discussed.
Discuss something.
Yeah, I mean.
An A program?
Signs advertising.
In a schedule, or how about in a, um, scheduled program, or some.
Production or musical, I, I don't know, amateur theater, something. But it just seems weird.
This one existed already, so if it's in black and lowercase, it's already in your.
It is already in there, but it doesn't mean it's right.
Right, no. Right, so.
This is why we're reviewing it. And you can see why we're reviewing it.
Yeah.
But I'm just completing out the section here.
So this would be for something like, you know, uh, one year, there's, um, Handel's Messiah at a church, and the sign was okay. And then they want to use the same sign, but just change the date and, for the next year.
Or if you had a, if you had a movie theater, right, every week, they would change.
Right.
What they're showing, or some churches, I don't know, I'm not sure you guys have these, but the little letter signs, where they change the little letters every week. That's what it's saying, is if your sign is permitted, you can change its content to match whatever is now showing.
Right, to maybe take out "the."
And just in a.
In program, um.
But in programming, or.
Or program, and then with an, you know, paren's S.
Schedules? Program schedules, or just programs?
Because they might, because they might change the name of it, they might have, um, might be something.
How about programming, uh, with ing at the end? Is that, changes in the programming? And it could be even churches. They have scheduled, they have, anything that has got a timing or schedule of events. How about scheduling events? How about changes in the schedule of events?
I like that. I mean, that seems, makes some sense.
Events. Signs advertising changes in the schedules of events, or something like that. Sarah, what do you think?
How is this?
Signs advertising changes in the schedule of events, provided that the initial installation of the sign. That actually looks pretty good to me. Does it have to be changes, or can it be just? I guess it would have to be just changes only. If it has a regular sign, well, let me think. Okay. I'm going crazy here. Okay, we've kind of gone over that section, which was, um, a little bit interesting. Okay, now we want to, is there any other questions about this section before we move on to, that was exemptions? Now we want to move on to electronic messaging centers, EMCs. They are on page nine.
Can I provide the slideshow for y'all?
Yes, we're going to have a slideshow.
So, you have electronic signs now. They're, they're not permitted. We're looking at permitting them. Um, and so there's a few factors that make electronic signs acceptable versus, "Oh, I'm having trouble driving because that's so bright." And so that, the brightness has to do with regulating how bright it can be in comparison to how bright it is outside. And that's a little piece of technology that goes into the sign, um, and can be set to a certain amount of above ambient light. And so that's fairly easy to do, as long as we stay with foot candles. It can be managed by code compliance, and everyone should be able to do that. Um, other distractions are when you've got flashing and scrolling and, you know, a whole movie going on on the sign. And so that's what these slides are going to show us. So this, this first one, maybe I'll make it wait for a second, uh, is, this is about how long it, this message is going to stay on the screen. Okay, so this one is five, a five-second hold time. And so you're going to see that change every five seconds.
It's dangerous.
And then.
See, it's dangerous.
This next one is a 10-second hold time.
Waiting to see.
If you're driving, 10 seconds, you could miss the changes at all, you know.
No, but you wouldn't be, but.
But you wouldn't notice it.
Register that it's not changing, so you wouldn't reduce speed to see.
Oh, that's an interesting point. That's an interesting point.
And this is the, a 30-second hold time, which means we'll sit here for a while.
Time to sit there and peel it.
Do you want a peppermint? I can find it now.
How long has it been in your purse?
Longer than 30 seconds?
Yes. That, that does. I think if I had, let me see.
Sarah, may I ask why you're showing us these different links?
Right.
You want us to pick one, or eliminate one, or I'm not really.
Yeah, so.
Understanding.
Generally, so three seconds is universally accepted as dangerous. So above that, there's an ability for you to say, what does our community want for these times? And so some communities choose 30 seconds, some communities choose five seconds, and some communities choose in between. And I think that is sort of a decision you guys should make as a group, as to how does the five-second hold time feel too fast to you? If it doesn't, then make it five seconds is the minimum hold time. Someone can still choose to let it hold for 30 seconds, but if you feel like that five seconds is going to be distracting in this smaller community, then maybe you pick 10 seconds or 20 seconds, or even 30 seconds.
With the safety?
Three seconds is the only one that's sort of linked with safety. Beyond that, it's really preference.
But it's the normal time, if there is one in other towns.
It just varies that much, that it's really, some places pick higher, some places pick lower.
I think the question is, does it look like it's flashing? If, the faster it goes, the more it looks like it's flashing. So a five-second would be more of a flashing effect. And then as you get down to the 30 seconds, it doesn't look like it's, you know, hardly moving. So, um, do we want to have flashing? If we look at the Rod and Reel, do we know a time on the, what is their timing?
It's about 10 seconds.
10 second on theirs?
I mean, this is just me counting, but.
Oh, that's a real official, uh, 10 second. Okay.
But I would think that 10 seconds, now, if you're at a light, you might have sufficient time to see a lot of change, not a lot of changeover, but some changeover on the Rod and Reel sign. Or any sign that's at a light, but if you're driving, this is, and this goes to my distractibility, I might want to see what's coming next. Whereas if it's 10 seconds, I have already passed, so that I'm not.
You couldn't sleep that night because you were worried about what was on the sign?
No, I got other worries, but.
No, she'll have everybody honking their horn at her, because she slows down and read the sign.
Exactly. It's just, it's just the way that I process information, and it may not be a valid.
For the safety of Chesapeake Beach and making sure that Commissioner Graismann is not going too slow, you think more than 10 seconds?
Well, there's really nothing a problem with me going too slow.
So let me ask you a question. What did, what was your opinion of it when you looked at it and you were counting it?
Oh, trade, the one over at, um, Rod and Reel?
Yes.
I felt like it was a reasonable hold time. I think that, I think that electronic sign is within sort of the regulations of what you would want if you're going to have electronic signs in the community. So I, I do think five is a little fast, but that's my opinion. And you, you all, I think, are the ones who should be deciding.
I mean, I would think, I don't know that they did this, but I would think Rod and Reel would have researched to see what would be the best and how much you could, you know, the timing. So that's why I was asking you what your opinion was, because I would assume they've already done their research, but then you were there counting it, so.
Um, and then what if you have, let's say, um, a sign that is, I don't, maybe they don't make these, where you have the 10-second hold on the top, and then the bottom you have a scroll? Do they have those kind, where you have a mixed combo?
Yeah, you have two of them, don't you?
We do have two of those. I thought we did, like the school. Doesn't the school have one? And, uh, so, um, how, how does a scrolling fit into this hold time situation?
Right, so I, the scrolling is treated differently than the hold time, and that's in the ordinance. So, does everyone feel comfortable, like, they have a sense of the hold times? Because I'll go on to the next thing.
Thank you. I think we do.
Which, everyone knows this next thing, which is transitions, but I just wanted us to talk about it, because sign, the way signs transition can be distracting. Um, and while I have created the ordinance with what's usually done, if you find any of these things distracting, maybe we should remove the possibility for that. So I just kind of used your basic, you know, PowerPoint, that's a fade. We've got a dissolve. Oh, sorry, I got another fade over here. There's our slide.
Ooh, fancy.
But a little distracting.
No, no, I meant the way that.
But yes. Yes, I mean, these are all ways that these signs can move. And so.
They really hold your attention with the shifting.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm, I'm actually going to go to the regulations now. Because. So I just want to get specifically to these sections. Okay. So this section, as they can employ an instantaneous change, a fade, a dissolve, and then it says, "Or other transition effects." Not prohibited in E, which you can see is that continuous scrolling, flashing, spinning, rotating, dynamic movement, full motion video. So the question is, do you want to say they can only be instantaneous fade or dissolve? Or do you want to allow more leeway in those transitions, as long as they're not any of these things in E?
How do we address it if there's no continuous scrolling, and Beach Elementary has scrolling at the bottom of their sign?
Right, so they would need, they'll need to switch. So a lot of the signs that are existent would need to switch their method of communicating. If, so you wouldn't be able to scroll. You would have to show a few words and then show a few more words. Right, so instead of it going across, you're showing your first three words, then three seconds later, you can show your next three words. Or however many, whatever the hold time is. So if it's 10 seconds, maybe we allow a different transition time for those little messages versus a fuller screen?
I'm just wondering if we want to, uh, adjust this to conform to what we already have in the town? In other words, oh, doesn't make any sense to allow what we have at the school, to allow what we have at Rod Reel? You know, I mean. Are we objecting to it so much that we don't want to have that in the future, or?
If I, if I might. You know how they say that texting and driving can be like, it's, I mean, it's horrible, and so what concerns me with the scrolling is that you take your eye off the road to see everything that's there. And I think that's similar to as bad as texting.
So it's generally accepted that these functions in E are dangerous and distracting, and so that's why they're in there. So I think if you want to bring your, your EMCs in compliance with some regulations, you know, we have the, the ability for them to come back and ask for a permit, but they're going to have to comply with the regulations, so they'll, they'll have to change how, what their hold time is, well, how, whether they're flashing or putting their message. whether they're flashing or putting their message slowly. Because right now, their signs aren't permitted. So we could ask them to just remove the sign, right? So what we're asking is for them to change the sign to ensure that it's safer for everyone.
How easily done is that change? What if the sign can't accommodate it in some way?
My understanding is that it would be a much older sign that would not be able to accommodate it. And even most of them can accommodate these features.
It wouldn't be a big deal?
No, the only thing that might be, that they might have to retrofit is the illumination level. But that is also, like even the folks who sell signs, this is actually where this recommendation for how bright it can be came from. So that should be easy to do.
Did you have any more on your slideshow you wanted to show us?
Those were all the slides for...
Because what I'm thinking is that because we have skipped around, we have not really gone over page 10. And I would like to make sure that we go over page 10 to make sure that we are in agreement with the square footage, et cetera. So let's go back to the beginning, to number one, and say, let me just quickly read. In commercial districts, EMCs are permitted with a maximum sign area of 16 square feet. The Board of Appeals may approve one electric message center per commercial property of up to 24 square feet as a special exception. Okay, so, okay, so why are we creating a situation where everybody can go to the Port of Appeals? I'm trying to figure out, why would we want to do that? Where we say, permitted with a maximum sign area of 16 square feet?
So I was on, yeah, I was on the fence on this as well. But if you think about, if you have a plaza, right, 16 square feet is not going to be big enough, maybe for, it might not be big enough for them to put all their stores in one hold time. But you wouldn't want every little store to be able to have 24 square feet. But there might be reasons that you would allow the 24 square feet. So that is why I presented it this way. If you all think that we can, because the other thing we can do is put in here, you know, if you're, you know, a shopping center with X number of businesses, then you may have 24 square feet, right? You can put it in here, or it can be a special exception.
Now, an EMC is different than an illuminated sign. An EMC tends to move in some way, right? Or it has some ability to be digitalized and moved around.
It doesn't have to move, but it...
It doesn't have to move, but they're going to move it if they can move it. But illuminated is just where there's a light inside of the sign.
Correct.
So when we look at EMCs, we're going to have to think more broadly that this is not just an illuminated sign, but this is one that can move digitally or potentially move. And I'm trying to think of a plaza other than Rod and Reel where you'd want to have the ability or spend the money on creating a huge enough sign, or you're saying up to 24 square feet. But you're not going to put all the other little stores in the EMC. You would put that just in an illuminated sign, where it'd be cheaper, right? Or can I not assume that? I don't know.
So there's a couple of ways that it's done, right? So you could have a small piece that is an EMC, and you could tell your tenants, like, if you want to be on the EMC, it's this extra charge, otherwise you're on the, you know, standard part of the sign. You could, you know, eliminate your existing sign and put up an EMC, and then even have an ad for each business that moves around. So there's a lot of different ways that different property owners might want to approach it. And I think leaving that flexibility for the property owner is ideal for, you know, business development as long as the sign is complying with the regulations you're most concerned about. As when we get to illumination, it's how bright it is. When we're dealing with EMCs, it's how is it transitioning and how quickly is it transitioning?
So theoretically, we could have an EMC on each business all the way up and down 260, and even 260 and 261. We could be like little mini Vegas, you know, down at the, you know, when you look at it.
Well, not Vegas, because you wouldn't allow all the flashing scrolling, and your light level would be lower. But yes, you could have an, if you, when you allow the EMCs, then everyone is allowed to have an EMC.
And I guess that would be my question, is do we want on 260 and 261, or wherever else, you know, we want them to all be able to have EMCs, electronic messaging centers, beyond the idea of just illuminated signs? So that's another question I have. What do you think, Commissioner Redkay?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
In other words, if we allowed every business to have these EMCs, electronic messaging centers like they have at Rod and Reel, if every business up and down from, you know, the beginning of the town all the way down, all the way up to your, you know, beyond, you know, Tangled could have it, whatever, and all the way up and down 260, if they all had these abilities to have digital signage moving possibly, is that what we want the look of Chesapeake Beach to be?
Not in my mind, no.
That's my question. I guess I didn't say it correctly.
On clutter.
It's, and it's, yes. And there's another, okay, it's the question that we have to address. Commissioner Brown, what are your thoughts? He doesn't care. And what do you all care about?
I, well, I mean, it, to me, and this is just aesthetically, I think it kind of could cheapen and degrade the quaintness and the scale of the town, and more distractibility, is what I'm thinking. We could, and we could grandfather potentially in those that are here now that have spent the money, because, you know, it's a cost to them. You allow what has been, but, and I don't know if they emit, I don't know if they add anything to the atmosphere, if the, if there's any carbon...
Emissions or...
I don't know, like what the, if there's heat involved and that then pushes something in the atmosphere, I don't know. But it's just something that I would think about, that it's just...
That's another good question. Do these have an LED effect that's more of a, more lumens? Or how do we measure that compared to just an illuminated sign?
Right, so...
Section J.
Yeah, section...
Some sections, right, but I'm just saying, if you compared it to an illuminated sign, we have like a frosted, I mean, I know it has the same amount of, you have light, but I mean, do you notice a brightness that's different? I mean, I noticed my LEDs, I notice are brighter in just the way it looks than a normal, just, I don't know, a bulb that is protected by a lampshade and everything else. There's just a difference in the lighting. And lighting the sky, I'm worried about that at night, would it bring out too much pollution, light pollution at the end of the day? I don't know. Everybody had one of these...
Yeah, so the illumination levels are covered under J, section J. And it's not really different, right? If you think about neon versus an EMC, you know, versus bulbs behind, yes, the one in Tangled is a low light. And so if that light level that's there with Tangled, if that's the light level that you all find acceptable, we can find out what that light level is and make the regulations that even if you have an EMC, it has to be at this light level. I don't think we have a meter right now to read it, which is what makes it hard to show you examples of what the illumination standards are. But I think it has to do with how you regulate illumination, how that, and how you regulate movement and transitions that affects whether the sign feels like Vegas or feels like it's just a regular, I mean, especially if you do a 30-minute or 30-second hold time, right? And there's not really a lot of change. It's almost like a normal sign, but they have the ability to alter it.
Right, okay, anymore about this?
I just, it's a fun question on that. Is there more of a structural, do these types of signs, because of what's required for the operation of them, my sense is that they tend to be kind of like bulkier, or like when you see them, you sense more of like a mass? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I mean, yes, they're obviously more three-dimensional and have more mass than a, you know, basic metal sign that you'd put on a pole. They're not necessarily different than, you know, like a nice wooden sign that you might have somewhere. So I think it depends on, you know, what's chosen for these signs. They are not cheap, so, you know, whether everyone's going to have one or not, you know, is regulated by finances. And the other caution I would say to kind of consider is that there's these, all these signs, none of them, okay, one of them has a permit. So...
What, you said one has a permit?
Only one of the existing signs has a permit. And so my concern would be if we grandfather in all the non-permitted signs, then anyone who wants to have a sign, sort of, why would they not have a sign, right? Because you've grandfathered in, so when, could, does it, like, sort of encourage folks just not to comply?
Do it anyway.
Do it anyway. Whereas when you're regulating, you are at least making sure that it is within the standards of what you want. That's, because sort of my concern around not adding it is, do you create a compliance issue? But maybe you don't, right?
Commissioner Smith, what are your thoughts?
Actually, my two, I guess, biggest things is, you know, if we're talking about grandfathering, I think we could run into, could run into a lot of trouble, a few, like people, you know, non-compliance of it. But on the other hand, the price of it, the price of it, you know, with these small businesses, not only to obtain it, but to maintain it, is much more expensive than just having a, you know, a stationary sign that has a lamp in it, or, you know. So I don't think it's as, I personally wouldn't be concerned about every single business getting a digital sign, just based on the price, I would guess. So, but I do think if we, you know, if we do grandfather some in, we could run into, could run into some problems there.
And so is that perhaps...
Big time, yeah.
Commissioner Han, what are your thoughts about allowing these? I'm really on number one here, which is allowing everybody to have a 16-square-foot EMC. Let's just start with that first one. Yeah, I'm sorry, F2, yeah, excuse me, F2.
So we know technology is constantly changing. So right now, they might be a little cost prohibitive, but that doesn't mean in the future that they would be cheaper. My concern is, while I understand all the businesses have already put signs out, and most of them without permits, if we grandfather them, why are we writing this? Why are we writing this? For everybody else in the future to follow something else different. And the whole purpose of this, if my understanding is correct, is to make the town appear a certain way. So if we're trying to make it appear a certain way, and we allow the historical in that we're trying to change, then why are we doing this exercise?
To stop the bleeding.
While, while I feel for them and how much they put out in the signs, if they didn't follow the regulations and get the permits, then that is what the regulations are for.
You mean citing for violations, and it'd be fair, to be even-handed?
If we're going to make, if we're going to do this because we want aesthetically for this town to look a certain way, why are we grandfathering them in?
Well, I guess the question I have is, do we want them, do we not want them? Are you saying eliminate all EMCs?
Nope, I'm saying whatever we decide, it should be across the board, and everybody follows it.
Okay. It is 7:45. We are leaving here at 8 o'clock. So let's finish, let's complete, if that's okay. I want to stop right where we are right now, number one. We've got a long way to go, I'm sorry. But it's something that I want everybody to take a look at all next month, all this next month. You've got time to look at all kinds of electronic signs, figure out what you like and think that we should have or not have. But this is really important, and once it goes into the code, it's there. So we have to be very cognizant about the details here. Any other last comment about this particular sign, number one of the EMC, before I tidy up and we close off and we go to the next item on the agenda, which is council commissioner comments? Any last comment about this thing before I, looks like Commissioner Redkay has something she wants to say? No? Are you okay?
I am.
Okay, all right, then we're going to conclude, at this point, we're going to conclude signage for tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and go to number eight on the agenda, which is comments by commissioners. And I do want to start with whoever has something, it looks like you have something, Commissioner Redkay.
Does I look attentive?
You do. You look very attentive. Okay, you have something to say.
I'm just waiting to hear the voice of wisdom.
Commissioner Brown, what would you like to say tonight?
Well, I had a couple things on this. Number F13.
Don't give, we're not done yet. We're going to come back to that, but don't give up.
F13, it's got, "No sign shall not be located in the public right of way." Think that needs to be cleaned up.
A second.
No, I know, yeah, there are definitely some, yeah, these are just drafts.
Without reading through it, J4, it has, wherever your foot candles is. 4B, "Shall be measured at night or during the day," it doesn't say. On L, A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I. G says, talks about, like shines, signs shall not be illuminated. Does that mean A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I can be illuminated?
He's on page 14, he's on page 14. So we are going to get to that, we are, actually, we're going to come back through all that. So, but he's on 14G, I believe. Where he says, "Such signs shall not be illuminated." We do have to come back to, I mean, there's a lot we've got to do with signage. I told you, it can take a long time to do signage. Okay, anything else you want to?
Final point.
Yes, sir.
The Rod and Reel has huge murals on the side of their parking garage. Where do they fall in this? Just a question for the future, but where do you find those? Do they have to go back and get the, I mean, are they permitted now? Or do they have to go back and get them permitted?
They're more murals than signs, though, I think.
You don't address that. It's defined in the definitions, but there's no section on murals, so, anyway. It's, it's defined in the definitions, but there's no section on murals, so, anyway.
Okay, and Commissioner Greisman, I think you've got something to say.
So it can be-
Pertains to planning the zoning, preferably, but you-
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. I have a recipe now, so.
Banana bread.
So I read, I don't know if it's on Bayview Hill Facebook page or at Neighborhood app that you can get, but there was someone, and it was in the news, that someone in Chesapeake Beach during one, I guess the storm or something recently, tree fell into her house in the roof, and so there was some chatter about, negative chatter about, I don't know if it was specifically this board, but there was negative chatter, and saying that this is what happens when you're not allowed to cut down your trees. Now, I don't know enough about the tree commission and what you have to do if you have a dying tree, but I just kind of wanted to bring, I just wanted to kind of bring that up to, because I stay attuned with social media.
As you should.
And so I just felt that that was something that was angering people that was out there.
How does that work, Ms. Franklin, the tree board?
So if you have a dying tree, you are allowed to remove it. That is, that doesn't have to go through the tree board usually, depending. So we have an arborist, we have superintendent of public works, and when a tree is dying or endangering a household, he goes out immediately, very quickly to make sure that folks stay safe. Now, if it isn't, if he goes out and it's not really a danger, then you may have to wait longer.
How are people made aware of this? That those are the rules? So I'm always worried about due process and notice.
So what we could do, so I just put together a matrix, basically, that says, like, this is my tree, do I need a permit? You can follow it, they're, they're going to be putting that on the website, so I can send over and say, can we also include information about what to do if you have a tree that is creating a danger?
That would be helpful to people, because, and then I don't know how we, maybe that could then be put on the Facebook page of where the town people go for kind of information and gossip, but at least information, so that, that's how the news would travel, and I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
If you, if you know you have a dying tree, then that's not a problem, you can go through the process, but that doesn't mean that if you don't know you have a dying tree, or, or the tree falls down on its own, I mean, that's up, up to the homeowner.
Absolutely, but I think that people were looking to gripe, and I just feel sometimes when you know that there is a gripe out there, you just get ahead of it and you say, here's the information, and it shuts that down. That's all I'm, that's, that's my purpose. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing for tonight, unfortunately, sorry.
That's not, that's not- Didn't make it up.
Something to the table. Make her step to that side so that you only have one person-
I know, you're getting all the good stuff before I could say it.
Commissioner Han, what do you have for us tonight?
I'd like to request public works address this front door, because I have a hard time coming in and I have a hard time going out.
Me too.
I think we can give that to our clerk, and yes, she, she's going to handle that for us.
Thank you very much.
It was hot today.
Is that, is that all you have there?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple of things. We were talking about notifying the businesses and maybe the public in general about us working on signage. We should be doing something about that as well, making, making sure that they know that we are actually streaming this, so that if they have a question, they can, you know, contact you or whatever ahead of time. Also, there was that bulletin that you sent us about the modular homes, which I think is of interest to all of us, that as of January 1, the state of Maryland has a new law that allows us to have modular homes, and what's either kind of modular and, there's another term for it besides modular.
AD, ADUs or?
It's a what?
You're talking about ADUs or?
No, modular home, you're allowed now, instead of having to build up a house, you know, from square, you can actually bring in a modular home or a home that's prefab, kind of a prefab home.
Couldn't before?
Um, the state of Maryland just codified it, so in other words, you are not allowed as a town now to say, no modular homes in Maryland. So now, you can go on Amazon, and for $64,000, you can actually put on your lot a modular home, which I found interesting, on Amazon.
Swimming, electrical, everything.
I mean, it's pretty amazing what we can, what we are able to do now, because, well, I shouldn't say what we're able to do, what we're required to do now in this town, so just a heads up on that one. And I think that's all I have. Okay, so our next meeting is going to be, let me just make sure I have the date on that, it's going to be on the, it's going to be, you are going to be here at the next me, you know, you're going to Vietnam, you're going to be here for the next meeting.
A second.
Okay. Wait a minute, you're out, uh-
Oh, then you're going to miss-
That's right, you're out of town, okay, so you were gone on the next meeting, it's going to be the 26th of March. So our next meeting is the 26th of March, and we will continue with signage, so again, do your homework as much as you can, so you can get all the details in here for us, and other than that, I'm going to ask somebody for a motion to- But I have to have a second.
I second.
Ever? All right, meet is a joy. There you go, thank you, guys.
We're actually sending that.
Good, for the signage? Oh, perfect, oh, good, I'm glad you did that. Because as-